Trying to build capacity, our district is very fortunate to have the support of a lot of that staff. It's not enough when you're dealing with those specific severe cases and then we go outside and contract that support. We have moved away from just having an adult to support that school to having an adult that is trained in specific areas of behavior because really behavior impacts the access to an education. And you can shut down a whole school when you're dealing with very difficult cases.
So it's very important then that the teacher contact the support system?
Absolutely. The teacher can go to the principal, they can go to the counselor within that school and that student can be discussed in terms of they see some needs or concerns and then we make the referrals. There are processes in place that we make referrals and if they don't have received that response, they contact our office and some of us will contact immediately the assigned staff member to the school and we'll make that connection. We're here to support the needs of those children. That's how our department functions. We are here to problem solve and you know, many of us, if we need to do that home visit, we will go out there and we'll find it and we are really problem solving to make it sure that that student is accessing the instruction but that the teacher is able to teach in the classroom with all the supports.
And I want to be sure that because you know, and I'm talking about an incident that happened several years ago where a principal was actually keeping track of how many referrals a teacher had of these students and looked down on that rather than looked this as a way this teacher is working to get this student, you know, the help that they need. They're saying, "You're bothering us too much."
I know.
In effect. I mean, have we changed that culture hopefully?
Well, I want to make sure we understand that we use the term referral to talk about different types of requests for assistance. And so there are disciplinary referrals, there are referrals that go to guidance counselors, there are referrals that go to district and social workers and different resources. So I think what you're specifically talking about is there are some teachers, a very small minority, where their discipline plan consists of write a referral and then they have an expectation that a detention, in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension result from it. What we're talking about here is a request for assistance, not a disciplinary referral.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Eric, did you have any? Well, I appreciate, I think this is an immensely important component of our instruction that is often misunderstood and I know we've done a lot of changes culturally to integrate so that, I mean, just so that the students don't feel isolated additionally. So, but I also know that you, under your guidance, have a tremendous umbrella of services that you provide, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, good morning, thank you.
Yes.
Ooh, cool.
It looked to me like it was one of those Hershey things.
Very cool.
Nice. Oh, I like that.
I knew you would.
I was thinking.
Good morning, good morning, board members, morning superintendent.
Good morning.
I am here to talk about the state of CTE, the 11 months into my new role, but four years into the role as a CT person in the district. Three, 2013, Dr. Bowden brought me aboard to help with CT in the high schools as he was kind of still formulating the plan for the district and career technical education. So our data begins with some data from 2013, but before I start, I'd like to piggyback on two things. One, the Wilkinson Project, the Stem Street Project is a very valuable project. We're a supporting partner in that project with the principal administration there. But one of the things you need to see, and if you get a chance to go to one of her STEAM nights, is that there's a wide range of people who show up, but the one thing you want to count is the number of smiles. I know you mentioned about the culture at the school, the smiles of the staff, the smiles of the people there, the students. That is a happy community. And so if you go to that STEAM event, you will see something that's more of a family now than it was a student body. And I encourage you to go to one of those events. It is a wonderful experience and Susan's doing a wonderful job. So, and then piggybacking on McIntosh, where Dr. Moore has been doing a wonderful job. We have now piloted, and I know Ms. Sogi mentioned, that we are introducing industry certifications to a middle school group. We're piloting that at three different schools. We have about 90 students that are accessing a high school curriculum and then taking exams in Microsoft Office, which are post-secondary exams, at which we have about 90 students. And so far, we have about 70% of the students being successful on the first sub-exam for that certification. So the success rate right now is very good. We have another 22 students out of that 90 taking the exam this morning. So we're expecting to have great success there as we roll forward. And again, that accounts towards acceleration for the middle schools once those scores are recorded and then I think it's a year delay before you'll see those scores in the school grade. But a snapshot of CTE, as we look at some of the numbers, again, we started back in 2013. That was my benchmark year with Dr. Bowden. As you can see, in 2013, the numbers, how they've grown, all the way to 2017, which is last school year's numbers. And then as I talked to you briefly in conversation, I will mention that our numbers are continuing to grow in 2018 with the expansion of programs at Northport in the new STC campus down south. So as you see, our CT programs at high schools have expanded tremendously. It's about a 50% gain. And then CT programs offered at STC for high school students. We continue to offer programs to high school students in an increasing amount to get them early on before they move on. And then you'll see the number of teachers have increased at about 30% over the last four years. Total number of high school students enrolled in CTE programs, the increase there kind of twofold. One is that we've expanded some programs, the other one is the quality of the programs have also expanded. Our engineering programs at the high school and middle school level are very, very strong. Our business programs at several schools are strong and each of our high schools have a signature program that they're very proud of that draws as a, I don't want to say a magnet, but it draws like a magnet program because of the strength of that instructor and program. You'll see a flatness in the middle school programs over time. That is partly because of turnover of staff and our key component in our programs right now is the instructor. When we have a strong instructor, we have a strong program. When we lose an instructor, it takes time to recover, if we can recover because of the certification issue also. It's a high school certification to teach some of those business courses and the CT courses. So we have a bit of a difficulty sometime replacing people over time. We try to do a transition if possible, if we know somebody's retiring, but when people leave to go elsewhere, it kind of leaves us hanging.
May I ask real quickly, where are we finding them leave to typically? Is it other districts, is it other schools, is it the private sector, is it?
It would be other districts, other schools.
Okay.
Out of the community.
Okay.
Or it's a retirement, a sudden retirement.
Okay.
Or an illness, or it's just time.
Okay, but there's no major.
It's not because of the curriculum or work that we're doing here. It is more of a family matter. Sometimes mother or father gets sick and they have to go and take care of people.
Okay.
I have not found that people leave because they're doing a great job here and they love it here and they would like to stay. We supply our programs with the state-of-art labs, industry-based software and materials. I don't think you'll find better supplied labs than what we have in Sarasota County.
And what certifications do you guys do at middle school? You mentioned the middle school certifications, but.
The only middle school certification we're doing currently for Industry Cert is the Microsoft Office, which is a three-test, subtest, and a bundle, which gets them Microsoft certified.
So if they get Microsoft certified, that counts towards the accelerated?
At middle school.
At middle school.
Typically, the plan and the implementation of that is at three schools. It's at Sarasota Middle School, Heron Creek Middle School, and at McIntosh Middle School. And so when they leave that program, the anticipation is that they'll start a program a year ahead of time at the high school and continue to get another certification so they can earn acceleration for the high school moving forward. But the acceleration will count at the middle school.
Is there an age limit for middle school? I mean, could I go in there and sign up and get a Microsoft certification?
There isn't, there is an age limit for middle school, but there's not an age limit for the industry certification. We can get you one of those. As you look, you'll see numbers increasing. Again, at the bottom, number is a flat number, the total adults enrolled in AGE programs, which is our general basic education programs. That right now is because we have the same number of staff we've always had and if we don't expand the staff, we don't expand the number of students that we can enroll. The capacity is about 3,000 students. Sometimes we're over, sometimes we're not. Those programs run a half a year sometimes and they graduate when they're finished. You'll see, and I'm going to get to the last page here very quickly, the total number of high school students in CT classes is what we're very proud of because we've almost doubled the number in four years. We went from 1,042 to 1,967. I think we'll hit the double this year. We're at about 2,000 students right now. If that holds up through the half year, we'll be in good shape. But the most impressive number is the industry certifications earned by high school students. For the last four years, we've gone from 845 to 1,650 at the high school level, which is an incredible amount of not only college credits for many of those for the students, there's some funding tied to those industry certifications, there's acceleration points that went towards the high school level. So we're very proud of those numbers. And as we look currently, we see we're at about, at STC, we have about 1,700 students enrolled and about another 220 right now at the campus in Northport. So we've done our expansion. We're, I don't want to say we're at capacity, but it's hard to find a seat right now. It's hard to find a classroom in our buildings because of the amount of teachers and students that are accessing the programs. One of our hurdles right now is the, still the stigma of vocational education. We have three components to that, is the student, the teacher and counselors, and then the parent. I think we have the student convinced. The last piece I think we have to convince is the parent, that we consider this a viable option equal to a college level. So three school board goals that are out there from the superintendent, the college and career readiness, we are continuing to increase the numbers just bucketfuls for the people accessing career and technical education.
I know there were, a few years ago, we were allowed to drop the "I" in SETI. It had more to do than just Todd leaving the program, but I'm thinking I'm seeing some turn up in Tallahassee about making community colleges, community colleges again rather than state colleges. And I would think if they do that, they'll look at us also. Have you heard anything on that this year?
There was not any movement on that in the last legislative session, the one previous to that, so in 16. There was an effort to tie funding to the name of the school, so it was not done through the legislative process, but it was done through the funding process, was basically said if you called yourself Technical College, you were ineligible to receive funding through the workforce development. It did pass in the Senate. It was blocked in the House. They were pretty resolute on that issue and it was not pursued the following year.
I thought there was something filed this year to have a board of community colleges.
Correct, but it has no, the last action taken against the word Technical College was in the 16th legislative session and it failed.
Good, thank you.
But the person who championed that in the 16th legislative session is now the Senate President, so.
Oh, yeah, that.
Yeah, that.
It could return.
I just want to say that I'm so happy that the quality of the STC program has improved, like you said, I think you said it's been improved since March around the time it started taking.
January.
I do want to say, and I've said this, I've said this before, but I just want to say it again in case anybody hasn't heard, is that when you go out and you hire people from STC, they have, I was on the SCF board, so I love SCF, but when you hire people from SCF, and I can at least say in the accounting program, they have theoretical knowledge. It probably prepares them to go off to University of Florida or Leon County Community College. But I just got to get my one dig in. But when you hire people in accounting at STC, you can put them to work that day. They actually have certifications in QuickBooks, they've actually filled out payable returns, they've actually done tax returns, they've actually done all the things that you would want them to do. And so whenever I try to hire, and I'm in the market now to hire somebody, and I'm going to hopefully hire somebody from STC graduate, so.
Well, that's our, our goal is to ensure that when they leave our facility, they're very, the transition between the classroom and the workplace is very seamless. That is the goal.
One of the things though, that they don't have when they leave STC is a big student debt. You know, and I find that so frustrating sometimes when, you know, and I've been reading reports on how good certain private schools are on getting their kids into college. And I look, well, you're putting them into private colleges rather than state colleges or work programs and if they get their nursing license through that state college, that private college, they're probably also taking a $20,000 to $50,000 debt with them rather than if they get it through the Technical College or even through the State College of Florida. So that's been a little eye-opening when I've been looking at those reports on how well they're doing. But I know when I went to the open house at, back when it was still STC, I think, or was it SDCI, SETI, there was a student on that campus that really thought this was great and he was still in high school and was hoping that, you know, he could take some of these classes. And I said, "Well, check with your counselor, your principal." Well, you know, he was, he was at, with a McKay Scholarship School and he wasn't able to. And I mean, we don't have any prohibitions about somebody from one of those schools coming in, we just have to get the funding for them, right?
Correct, correct.
You know, it's just something that just comes with our public school and I think that maybe some of these other schools might want to look to reach out to you just how they can integrate with us also because our doors are open.
Absolutely.
We just need to make it happen.
Absolutely.
Good point. Well, no, and I think, well, the numbers are staggering and I think that this is, it's something I know this board historically has been eager to see move forward and obviously has championed and funded many of mechanisms to see that happen, but I also think economically, locally, statewide, nationally, this is something that we have to be doing, especially going off of the student debt and the, you know, looking at the middle class and how it's staggering and really keeping them down. It really comes down to student loan debt as well. So I'm excited to see this, but one thing that you said that I believe is also one of the major roadblocks and this is something that we have a limited ability to do in this realm, but as, you know, public individuals to go out and speak to families so they understand that this is so important and that the stigma of technical education is not at all what it was before and if they want their children to ultimately be able to pay the bills and be very successful, that this is definitely the best path. So I appreciate the presentation and the work that everyone's doing. It's very exciting. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, if I could just remind you that your legislative platform was divided into Sarasota priorities and statewide priorities. One of the four Sarasota priorities was to advocate for increases in workforce development funding that is tied to enrollment. To put all of these gains into context, this year, the Workforce Development Fund here in Sarasota saw its first increase since 2008 and it was a $50,000 increase. So all of these gains in enrollment took place with flat funding and there has been no increase in tuition during that time period. So one of the things that we're advocating for is a closer tie between the allocation of the Workforce Development Fund and current enrollment. If you go and ask for an increase in the Workforce Development Fund, that typically is a non-starter in these types of budget years in Tallahassee, but the allocation of that fund amongst school districts that are participating should be closer tied to enrollment.
And one last thing is about, we are working with UF Engineering in the Innovation Station. Yes, and they have, with Polytech and the AGS program, we continue to take Larry Thompson's vision of creating that art and creativity piece and connecting it with the career technical education because really career technical education, there's a lot of creativity there. It's an art. It's culinary arts, it's graphic arts, it's engineering arts, it's architecture, there's a lot of art involved in creativity. And with the plan that we have, we're going to connect not only the AGS program with engineering and the engineering innovation station, but they're working with Booker at taking the digital arts students and showing them the full design concept process and the wraparound process all the way to production. And so I think that's going to be a great piece to really round out our students as they go onto college or into the workforce.
Very good. It's exciting.
You know, an area that I kind of bring up every now and then is something that my granddaughter looks at and watches is that Project Runway. And what about fashion design or fashion, the industry, or something like that? I don't know if there's something out there that we could be offering or if there's enough interest in that, but you know, I think we ought to look at doing something. And it's not just the ladies out there that are interested in this. I know that there are some young men that are interested in fashion designing.
That's a good question though. Is that an offering around from, in the, from the technical education, the certification standpoint?
Well, our first, we, all of our programs are really designed around high-income, high-demand, high-wage, regional jobs. So we work with Career Source and Career Edge to determine what that area is so that when we create a program, after we do our first class, the program doesn't expire because we've now supplied the workforce with all of its trainees. So it has to be a high-demand, high-wage industry that we then have an industry certification associated with it. So in terms of fashion, we might say digital design is a good start.
Yeah.
We can work a little bit towards fashion design in digital design by creating the ideas and concepts in digital design and then go off to a college with a portfolio of that. But we can connect and theme things a little bit deeper into the career cluster based on what their interests are.
Good point.
Thank you.
Do you want to plug your 50th anniversary? Wilkinson got theirs in.
Well, our 50th anniversary has been running all year. I mean, I delivered a token of our pictures. We had our celebration in October. It was very successful, I believe. We've had a lot of positive feedback from our SAC. We're hoping for another good 50 years, at least another good 12 years and then we'll get us through this reign of leadership and I only have 12 years.
So what happens in 12 years?
I retire in 12 years, right?
Thank you for providing sufficient notice.
If I'm here for 12 years. If you allow me to be here for 12 years. But no, the, yes, the 50th anniversary is a big plus. We had an impact in the community and I challenge you to go to, if somebody responds to your house or first responder, ask them they were trained. If you go get a haircut, ask them where they were trained. If you go to the hospital, ask them where you, they were trained. If they are fixing your car, ask them where they've been trained. I bet you one out of two, maybe one out of three have been impacted. If they live in Sarasota County, they went to either the VOTEC Sarasota County Technical Institute or Sarasota County Technical College. So we've had an impact in our community.
I guess he did.
Well, old habits die hard.
Sarasota, yeah, I went through all the Sarasotas, I forgot some though, yes.
But really quickly, we, we partner also with the Chamber and Career Edge and all of such to blend, to bridge that gap with any local businesses who are looking, who have vacancies, because you hear there's no talented workforce. So making sure that all of those listening, they're not working, that we are here to help.
Call me.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Next up is CTE Certification, STC Dual Enrollment. No, that's, I'm sorry, we just did that. Career Advisor, Karen Rose and Sue Meckler, sorry about that.
You were born when STC started, you were not born when VOTEC started.
I definitely wasn't.
I don't have.
They don't have anything garnet in that entire house, I don't think. How are you?
Excellent, good morning.
I think we're back on track now, so.
Hey, I want to start out by recognizing Dr. Bowden for prioritizing and supporting the middle school, college, and career program that we are going to address this morning. With the guidance of our superintendent and partnership with the Education Foundation, we set priority goals for this school year. Sue Meckler's going to give you updates on each of those goals. Each middle school has a college and career team that includes the career advisor, an assistant principal, and guidance counselor. Students are learning, and this is the most important piece, that their decisions have an impact not only today but tomorrow. Every student is empowered with an individual plan that can map out their career goals and college goals and/or both. Students are learning that this plan evolves as they grow their knowledge and aspirations. Sue?
So you can see, our next slide talks about opportunity ahead because we really feel this is a tremendous opportunity for our students. To look at our goals that we have, you will see that I'm very proud to say that we are on track of achieving each and every one of these goals this year. This isn't about awareness, to bring that awareness of possibilities to the surface for our middle school students. It is about exposure and helping them to understand the pathways that they may have not even thought about as possible options for their future. And it's also about exploration, where students can dive deeper based on their own personal interests. You will see that one of the key components to our goals was to have a developmentally appropriate curriculum. And thanks to our partnership with the Education Foundation of Sarasota, we were able to fund a curriculum in which our students participate on a weekly basis. That period has been built into the master schedule and teachers are helping to facilitate that learning for our students through an online program. I gave you a sample of the types of lessons students are experiencing as well as the complete scope and sequence for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, where you can see the types of lessons that they are experiencing. For example, a sixth grade student may be experiencing a lesson called "Defining My Dreams" and it's really about what is the concept of future and what is the path that you need to achieve those dreams. It's really about front-loading the lessons for our teachers to make it a seamless process for them and our career advisors have been very, very supportive in that effort. They preview the lessons of the week for each grade level, they send out reminders to the teachers as to what that lesson entails, giving them some front-loading to set the students up for success in the lesson, as well as possible extensions should the student finish that lesson ahead of time. Students understand that those choices that they're making today will have a definite impact on their future. In addition to that, we all know that soft skills are what we hear our employers say that our students need regardless of what career choice they make. And so communication is at the top of that list. Those soft skills happen each and every day in each and every one of our classrooms. Our teachers are committed to making sure that our students are problem solvers, that they're able to work as teams, that they're able to listen and think critically and have those speaking skills and able to communicate respectfully. In addition to that, I put Career Jenga in here because this is kind of a reward program for our students. Our career advisors are recognizing students on their success and their mission and their attempts at thinking about their future by having game-like competitions where they play Jenga, but it's through questions and answers about career possibilities. So it's learning through fun and games. I also wanted to share some data with you based on our task summary completion for quarter one. We did have, of course, hurricane week in there, so we did revise our schedule. And then we also only included those weeks that have five days within a school week, so Labor Day was not part of this first quarter. But we are very happy with our completion rates. As a district, 95% is our completion average. You can see school by school what those completion rates were. One area that we're looking to improve is Booker Middle School's completion rate and one of their struggles is that their period is the first period of the day. So they're working on increasing this timeliness of students arriving on school and then doing makeups for those students who aren't completing those tasks. In addition to that, it's been a collaborative effort with CTE, working with Tripp Jennings and Sherry Rizzi, the program specialist there, to define the monthly district career clusters. As you may know, the U.S. Department of Education has 16 career clusters. Within those clusters, there are 79 pathways. Those are kind of the subsets of each of the career clusters. And so we have a three-year rotation cycle in place and you also have an extensive copy of that. This shows our year one, focusing on one particular career cluster each month at our schools. Over the three years then, the students will have exposure to all 16 and those high-impact career areas will have multiple exposures. For example, October is National Manufacturing Month and they will experience that each and every year. I want to tell you that our career advisors have done an incredible job of setting up a tone of just real excitement for each of these career clusters. And our next slide is actually a video clip that Dr. Moore referenced earlier today. One of the goals was that we have students exposed to over 100 careers by the time they leave middle school.
Good morning McIntosh Middle, I'm Mr. Craig and welcome back to Mr. Craig's College and Career Corner. As you may remember, this month is manufacturing jobs month. Last week, I spoke with you about L3 aviation. This week, I'm going to speak to you about Turvis Tumblr. These Turvis Tumblers are made right here in Sarasota and are sold all over. over the world. These tumblers are one of the best-made and most popular around because of their patented technology that keeps hot beverages warm and cold ones cool for hours. The company was founded in 1946 and began with just two people. Today, the company employs more than 900 people nationwide. Jobs at Turvis include everything from factory manufacturing jobs to retail and corporate positions. Education requirements for working at this company require at least a high school diploma for an entry-level position on up to a technical college certification and beyond. Pay for these jobs vary and are listed on their website at turvis.com if you are interested in checking them out. I will be back next week. Have a good day, and do excellent work for your teachers and for yourself.
Do we do that at every, is that McIntosh, unique to McIntosh?
No, it is not unique to McIntosh. This is a commitment that our career advisors have made, that based on the career cluster of the month, each week, they are focused on a different subset of that career. So, again, thinking of 36 weeks of school over three years, they will meet that goal of having been exposed to 100 different careers in these various career clusters. So, we're very pleased that the career advisors have taken that role on. In addition to that, they've also set just a tone at the school for the month. They've created bulletin boards, as you can see here. Again, Tripp Jennings has been very generous in supplying photographs for us from STC related to various fields that we offer. And, the next one will show also that there are PowerPoint slides that they have created for those teachers in the college and career readiness classes. There's also a sense of college and career spirit throughout the schools. They've written to various universities asking for penance. The teachers have things posted outside of their classrooms. Mine would say, "I went to Kent State University. Want to know more." So, you'll see, there's a little Kent symbol up there. I had to put my alma mater in there. And, it's, it's just a whole sense of pride at the schools, and the kids really, again, exposing them to various options that are out there for them. In addition to that, the Education Foundation has been extremely supportive, and we're very involved in two aspects here. One is that a group of seventh graders from every single middle school is visiting one of our local colleges or universities. Angela Hartvix, our Fine Arts Program Specialist, is overseeing the visits to Ringling College. When those students visit Ringling College, they actually are creating a piece of artwork while they're there at the visit. And, Sherry Rizzi, our CTE Program Specialist, is helping to oversee the visits to all of the other local universities and colleges, and that's with our seventh graders. There's some pre- and post-survey work being gathered to see about those experiences and how we can make them the most effective as possible, and then increase the numbers of students going on those experiences. The other piece of that are called career chats. The Education Foundation has been creating a resource bank for us of local people that can come in and talk to our students about various careers in our communities. And, beginning second semester, that database will be available for our career advisors to work with our teachers and particular groups of students to have those experience of in-house visits to the schools. And, I'd like to close by talking about the two pieces that our students are working on. One is within our curriculum, there's a portfolio that students are developing that shows their various interests, their various surveys that they've taken that can follow them on through high school, should high school continue with this same curriculum. In addition to that, our grade eight students are working on a planning guide to help them prepare now for their selection of coursework in high school, so that when the counselors come and work with those students, they will have a much better foundational knowledge in preparation for those selections at high school. So, I'd like to close with that quote, "A dream written down with a date becomes a goal. A goal broken down into steps becomes a plan. A plan backed by action makes your dreams reality." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Where did that quote come from?
Just something I found as I was reading about career in college.
I'm very curious, what do you, do you guys have to do something specifically to make sure that this process is collaborative with the learning environment, and does it become a distraction to it?
So, within the master schedule, we have an extra 25-minute period, and that 25-minute period was devoted for two days a week for iReady Math, two days a week for iReady ELA, and the final day of the week, whether it be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, whatever day the school chooses, is focused on this college and career curriculum.
And, I'm very, very interested about the soft skills, especially when it comes to communications for eighth graders. I mean, when I saw the one, I just want to pick this one out in February 12th, because I, I'm like a lost words. "Students make a list of items they would like to discuss with their family and make a plan to begin a discussion." I would love to be there to see how you guys are able to facilitate that, because my experience with eighth-grade boys especially is, "How's your day going?" Uh. I mean, that's what my experience is.
The soft skills are built into our core content classes and to the Tech Active classrooms, where students have hands-on inquiry and problem-solving, and it's student-centered versus teacher-led, and they are taught respectful discourse, how to agree and disagree based on evidence and not personal opinions, using text and using experiences they might have had in their inquiry.
Is there any way I can get a copy of that instructional material?
That's a rhetorical question.
I would love to be in a classroom in February, and if I could bring a guest eighth grader in there, too.
Well, you could bring that eighth grader in all year if you wanted.
Hinging off the soft skills component, though, I think, and you'd mentioned you do it inside the Tech Active classes. Is that what you did?
Correct.
And, one thing, because I see this in the private sector certainly, and it's just a common discussion, I think it's also generational, just the amount of technology that's used. So, is that embedded into that Tech Active discussion, not only the communication, I mean, because technology has taken over so much of our communication, all of us are equally guilty of it, but we had at one point, there were no cell phones, you know, when we were growing up. So, so now, that's a large part of where they communicate, and I think that's where the decline goes. But, that's not scientific. That's just my personal opinion, by the way. But, but do you, is that something that's kind of addressed in some of these discussions? Because I think that that's a huge component. It's the white elephant, the big elephant in the room, if not, as far as the proper way to communicate and when to communicate digitally and when not to, and all of that.
Well, we have a first 20 days of every school year where students are learning respectful discourse. It's built into the content in each of our core classrooms, so it's an actual curriculum. And, I have to tell you, from an individual standpoint, as principal, 10 years ago, I was seriously concerned. Students weren't reading body language any longer. They would be in groups and still using their thumbs to communicate, and that has changed in our middle schools. They, they are reading body language, and they are conversing and deliberating and doing it well.
That's very refreshing to hear. What do you attribute that change to? Solely the curriculum focus, or is it?
To the curriculum and content, moving to problem-solving, incorporating the technology to engage them, get their interest, their primary way of communication, and integrating the curriculum of respectful discourse, and allowing them to collaborate and problem-solve as a group, speaking the language of the content.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah.
You know, and I think it might also say something about today's world, when in fact, our schools have to teach kids how to communicate, because perhaps around the dinner table, if in fact, there are sitting around a table, oftentimes, I'm looking out and I'm seeing parents on the phones and/or in the car on the phone and not talking to the kids. And, it's just another one of those things that we have to pick up, that we have to teach kids how to communicate. It's a good thing we're doing it.
We had a conversation as recently as yesterday. Laura was in my office, and we were talking about kind of what the future looks like on the way we educate our students about social media. We've had several very disruptive events, specifically at our high schools this year, that are rooted in the use of social media and students' inability to draw cause-and-effect relationships, which is, if I do this, it will be disruptive to the school environment, and a sheriff's deputy will arrive at my home. They're not connecting those dots and understanding that one moment on social media can be very disruptive to a school campus, and that they will be held accountable to that disruption. So, we are talking about ways that we educate them, but making sure that they understand cause-and-effect and that they can predict results. If you do this, we want to make sure you understand the consequences of it. We have some partners involved in that. The sheriff is very interested in doing some PSAs and working with us, making sure our students understand those consequences upfront. It's not just reacting. We'd like to eliminate those types of issues, but social media right now is a huge issue on all of our campuses and something that we're going to have to address in a very, very deliberate way.
But, I appreciate you addressing that, because I don't think it's exclusive to the middle school grade, certainly high school, and now trickling probably likely into elementary, which is crazy in my mind, but it is the world we live in, and we have to pivot. So, I appreciate that. And, it's, it's good to hear that you've seen in a 10-year span, which I think the use has exploded, that you're seeing it kind of transition to a more positive body language reading and cause-effect. So, that's, that's good to hear. Do you have anything else?
Well, I, I see that I'm using the technology a lot more, and, you know, there's unintended con, I mean, I'll post a picture, you know, with the family, and, you know, my daughter will get mad because she didn't look good in it, and I'm like, or my sister. "You didn't ask me!" You know, so there's all those things, too. But, it's like, I'm finding I'm not using my, I mean, I'm reaching more people and interacting there with them more, but, you know, I used to be able to look at a person and know what their phone number was. Now, I, I sometimes have to look to see what my phone number is. I mean, we just don't know those things anymore, so my brain isn't working as much as it should or did. This is probably evident by my actions this morning. But, it, we just lose a lot. We gain a lot, but we have to understand what we're losing, too. So, thank you for working with those kids on that.
You're very welcome.
Anything else? Good. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
We caught up to our time, I believe.
We're seeing a lot, a lot more cute kids.
Next up, dashboard iReady update.
Okay. So, first of all, I want to thank you for asking the question, is iReady meeting our expectations? And, I can tell you with a resounding yes that we feel that it is. I want to tell you what we're going to share with you this morning, three parts. I think we'll be pretty quick about doing this. In order to share the answer to that question, I gave you a read-ahead of the key questions that we ask and what does iReady do for us. Natalie, because we know how much you respect our principals and how they feel about programs in their schools, Natalie created a survey for them, and she's going to share the results with you on that. And then, Denise is going to share with you the latest dashboard update, which is iReady and Achieve 3000 data. That's on our new dashboard that will be revealed to the public after this meeting. So, I'm not going to read the read-ahead to you at all, but I just want you to know, we chunked our thoughts about meeting expectation for iReady into four areas. We do need a progress monitoring tool. This is one that has a reach of 4.5 million students. It's in 52 of the 67 districts in our state, along with others nationally. We found it's highly correlated to the performance of our kids on FSA, and Denise is going to show you that through the dashboard. We know that we needed an instructional tool, and iReady provides individualized instruction. You've seen evidence of its use in almost every presentation that we've had in front of you over the last several months. We also know that we needed something that allowed us to get a VAM score for teachers that are not assessing, assessed through FSA. And, we also needed a tool that parents could use at home, and our community members are very, very much reliant on the data from iReady. They use it on their benchmark performance of their goals. Just yesterday, Dr. Bowden and I were talking to Roxy Jerdy from Community Foundation, and she, along with many of the others that are listed here, they depend on our data in order to track whether their funds are being used adequately. So, Natalie is going to share a little bit about what the principals have to say about the program.
Good morning. I think you have in front of you a copy of our summary of the iReady Principal Survey. So, we did survey all of our elementary and middle school principals because right now, iReady is at those two grade levels. And, as you can see, the first two charts are at a glance. We asked them about how they feel iReady meets their instructional needs, and we broke it down into separate categories, as a progress monitoring tool, as a teacher toolkit, as a way to provide individual instruction to students, you know, on the computerized individual instruction, and also as a way to predict students' performance on the FSA. And, we asked them the same question for English Language Arts, as well as mathematics. And, you can see right away from the chart that an overwhelming amount of our, number of our principals feel that it's either extremely useful or very well meeting their needs. I won't go into all the data, but you.
Dr. Oka, so.
I win, I win the bet. Didn't get past the first page.
What, what number, just so I know, because I'm the new guy.
Yes.
What, what number do you feel these scores need to be in order for you to think, okay, it's, it's effective?
Now, this is a, this is survey data, self-reported, but if you keep in mind that we asked 32 principals, and if I, if I group the first two favorable categories, it's 94%, 74%, 82, 94.
And, what were you expecting?
I would say that's significant, that they are feeling.
So, in two years' time or a year's time, when we evaluate iReady, what would that number need to be that, that you would say, okay, this, the principals really want to maintain this program?
What number would it need to be for you to feel that our principals, because I, I think it's pretty resounding there, but are you looking for 100%?
No, no. I'm, I'm looking for the people with the PhDs at the end of the day to tell me what they think it should be, so that when I have to evaluate in two years, I'm allowing you to create the metric. I just need to know what the number is, so that in two years' time, when I go to evaluate, you've got the PhD, not me.
And, I can answer that question. I would think that you will see that in some cases, especially as it relates to the teacher tool, the numbers are more in the 70%ths. And, that's because teachers are still learning how to use the tool, and you'll see from some of their open comments, they're saying that teachers, some of them don't feel 100% comfortable. So, I would say in a couple of years, you're going to have a higher percentage of principals and teachers thinking that, feeling that they're more comfortable with that particular aspect of the tool.
And, I, from my own personal point of view, I think having a survey is, is very valuable, and I think that 70%, if you say 70%, that's the number, then 70% is the number. I'm fine with that. I think that should be one part. I think another part that I think is, is just as valuable is how well the predictive score works.
Absolutely.
I would like to know, you know, and allow you to come up with that metric, how much of a standard deviation does the predictive score versus the actual FSA, how much deviation is that? And, from, from a public CPA in Venice, right now, from what I'm seeing, it's fine. But, but what do I know? I have a CPF, my name, not PhD. I got the wrong three letters. So, so I'm asking you.
Well, I figured you're making more money than PhD, so maybe they're the right three letters.
Don't minimize what you know, Mr. Robinson. Denise is going to show you that.
Yeah, we are going to show you some.
But, my point is, I would like those to be, you know, 70% of the survey, this, this standard deviation of the predictive score, and then maybe some other things that the doctor, doctor, doctor can come up with, you know, to come up with an overall evaluation tool, so we can say, hey, in two years' time, when we go to evaluation, hey, look, surveys are at 85%, predictive scores are putting one on, you know, on task. This other thing that Eric Robinson can't think of is trending correctly. And, then I can say, oh, look, it's working. Does that make sense?
Right. So, for a survey of this type, I would think that numbers in, you know, 90% and above is something you would expect for a tool that we're using, especially as we move into.
We change it from 70 to 90.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, most of them are in the 90s, except for the one with the teacher toolkit. And, I think I can hypothesize as to why that might be lower, based on their comments, which is that teachers are still learning how to use that particular component of the tool. And then, if you.
Well, it also could be the principals were asked. Well, it also could be the principals were asking this, and maybe the principals didn't know how well the teachers were using it.
Exactly. And at the middle school level, we're in our second or third year, second year, so I would expect that that would also change in the upcoming years. And as you can see on pages three, four, and five, we also gave them an opportunity to just provide us with their commentary. And I did group those into categories, into key concepts, and the...in terms of how they feel it's meeting their needs as a progress monitoring tool, the majority, again, most of the comments, 20 out of the group of comments, were that they find the data useful. It's a complement to other data sources they have. It's never standalone, and they feel it does facilitate the data chats and communicating with their teachers about students' progress. They also find it valuable as an instructional tool for teachers. But if you look on page four, you'll see, I labeled it Opportunities for Growth. They are seeing that not all teachers feel 100% comfortable using the tool, and they are still learning how to use the resources. So, that's something that we expected, and we will, you know, provide support in that regard. We also asked them if there was anything else they wanted us to explore, and there are few individuals, mentioned a couple of products there, that we will gladly take a look at. The good thing about iReady is that it serves as a progress monitoring tool, as and as a teacher tool also, for targeting, you know, creating lesson plans. So, you have some fabulous, you know, diagnostic assessments out there, or some great progress monitoring tools. This is one that has different components to meet our needs. And then we also just asked them, what else can we do to help them? And majority, not very few comments, but some pertaining to more support for teachers.
Do you have any questions?
No, I was just happy to see that, you know, how well iReady predicts the scores on the FSA. I mean, we're getting 94% for English and 86% for math, that they thought that they were on track for predicting either very well or extremely well. So, I mean, I would think that...
We are going to see that next.
We have the actual predictive scores that I think show, you know, pretty good, pretty close.
The problem is, the dashboard is a little bit small, so you really do need to see it for you to...I don't know, can you make it a little bit bigger?
Yeah, a bit too blurry. While he walks over there, though, but I do want to add to what Eric had said, and I...two things, and I know this board has been, over the course of time, once we did the initial investment of iReady, I mean, it was a significant financial investment. But then what people in the, you know, the community need to understand, not only was it financially, just on the licensing, as I believe, for the software or the program, but also the professional development incurred, and that was huge. And I think, I appreciate the survey, because I even know on social media, I would read certain teachers just saying, oh, I've got to go to training again for this, and they want to be with their students. But it's...so, it's an investment on the front end to hopefully be that outcome of the predictive scores, coupled with some of the visible learning. I'm very encouraged with what I'm seeing. I guess it's kind of where I'm going. But I do agree, and I think the people at the table today do have the knowledge and support to create that, and I think they fully understand lining it up to reasonable expectations that we can track it year over year, because we have invested so heavily in it, and lining it up with...and what does that look like? I don't...I mean, I think that we can certainly...would you...I mean, I saw a lot of notes being written down. I think that's definitely something we can measure. We weren't measuring it before, so now we're measuring it, so then put those benchmarks out there and then see how we're doing.
I would say that, in my experience, that we're in a similar position than we would be in any other major instructional initiative. If you went back and talked about active boards coming into our classrooms, there was pushback from teachers saying, get those out of there, I want my white boards back. Now, if you tried to take them, they would fight you for them. Classrooms of Tomorrow, when we changed science classrooms, there's always those early adopters, but there's also those resistors. But the resistors, in fact, Shirley and I were having a conversation yesterday, that's almost a conditioned behavior, is that some of our teachers believe this too shall pass, is that we don't show consistency of leadership, is that we have various initiatives and we commit ourselves to them for three or four years, and then we move to something else. And so, when you talk about iReady, I think where you would expect to be is that we have some people who are very passionate about it, on both sides of the spectrum, quite honestly. There are some teachers who are still resisting, but we have moved past the early adopters and are into that core of our teachers and principals that believe it is changing instruction for the positive. But it's not any different than our experience with active panels or Classrooms of Tomorrow or any other initiative that you would talk about instructionally, is that it is change. And if you've studied the cycle of change, in elementary school, we're three years in and have a different experience than where we are with middle school, where we're only two years in. And so, they're a little farther into that change cycle.
But what I don't want is, three years from now, people are like, okay, we're tired, it's time for the new thing, and we're like, eReady comes in, and they're flashing and glamoring, and we're like, no, we have the data.
That's right.
This iReady's working. Why change it for change's sake? Let's stay the course. But I just want to have that data so that we can make that decision, because, so I don't go off and do eReady. You know, I want to be able to...
Be G-Ready.
A G-Ready.
But I agree to your point, and I think that should be done on almost the front end of any major purchase. And we weren't tracking, and that's still going back to what I said, we weren't even tracking it when we said, I mean, it was on the board agenda, and I don't know, there were very detailed discussions about it, so...but in the future, when there is the point two, point...
But the worst thing would be for you to tell me at the end, oh, this is what we meant to evaluate it with, and it...because then that's just not...
Credibility.
Credible. We need to have the stuff on the front end, although it's in the middle, at least we have the stuff in the middle end, so that we have...and I'm allowing you guys to develop the metric, and what the cut score is for that metric, and what stuff is made up. Is that fair, Dr. Kingsley?
I really appreciate that you asked the question, because honestly, we haven't been asked the question before, so it's been...
That's not my weakness.
No, no. It's been an absolute effort on our part to try to answer that question. So, it's, hey, data is good. It informs our decisions, and when you make major purchases...
So, when do you think you'll be able to have something?
We will come up and give you...you want a survey, here's the results we're looking for. You want this percentage predictive score, and here's what we are expecting iReady to provide for us.
Or whatever else the three doctors think is good.
He's asking for an evaluation design.
Right, evaluation design.
And will in advance set...
See, those words, evaluation design, I would never...
Let's go ahead and share the data that we have from your dashboard.
But I don't want to get too far from Bridgette's comment, which is, this very first page, quite honestly, should have taken place at the time we made the original financial commitment. Why is it that we entered into a relationship to begin with, with iReady? What were our expectations? What were our needs that it was meeting? And that's where I think this process is a little bit difficult, is you're asking us, is it meeting your expectations? And I don't know that we had any as part of that process.
You better get them.
Right. And so, that should have taken place at the time of purchase, and we will get specific...what's the term you used? I liked it.
Evaluation design.
Evaluation design. When, when did you say that was going to happen?
Yes.
I understand, but now that we're here, got to deal with the hands that's dealt. When do you think that will happen?
So, you know, this was our attempt to answer your question, but now I understand that you want us to have a percentage on that, to say, year after year, this is the percentage that we want answering that question, in survey, in predictive score.
Whatever evaluation design that you're going to come up with...
I think you're talking about sort of an evaluation rubric. And we will have it to multi-layered...
I know that was a cube I used to play with, but...
Well, but I don't want to box ourselves in that we're going to develop this and have a numerical score, at which point iReady gets its contract renewed or not. There still has to be an assessment of the product, but there needs to be some professional judgment in regards to, is it meeting our expectations and do we renew that contract? Which really is kind of the elephant in the room, is that this contract will come due. Rates will change. Do we want to continue that investment? And we'll have to have some sort of evaluative process that shouldn't solely be based on professional judgment, but it shouldn't exclude...
No, I wasn't implying that I'd be bound by anything.
But I think not only is it meeting our expectations, is this happening, is it pushing student learning forward?
That's right. That's exactly right.
And, you know, because I'm still hearing, you know, and it's not in our district as much as it is, you know, countrywide, that we're still teaching to the tests, and we're spending too much time on testing. And is iReady looking like a test, or is it a learning tool? How is it helping learning? That might be a little harder to put on your rubric or evaluation, but that's the bottom line.
Correct.
Is it moving learning forward? Are students engaged? Are students enjoying learning? Are teachers enjoying teaching? And that's a little different than...
Very much so, and I think that goes, stems from the beginning question. So, learning from, lessons learned from this particular purchase, is multifaceted, and yes, what's the main goal? Is our student achievement increasing? That would be the main reason we're purchasing this and investing so much into it, and getting behind it, to get teachers to get behind it. So, now that we're in the middle of it, and I think a lot of this is, thank goodness, that it's showing what it's showing and not the alternative, because I would be really disappointed, and it would even highlight more so that the practice of procurement has to be a lot more well-thought-out and not what's new and fancy currently. And I think it is hard to only align it based on, what is it intended to do? What are the long range? What do we hope to see it to do? What's the feedback from the teachers and the instructional mechanisms? And I don't know if it's hard numbers per se, but there should be some kind of goal for us to evaluate, for you to evaluate, which would be your...you would come up with it. I don't know, that needs to be...I worry, based on the discussion, I don't want it to be an intensive amount of labor on your end to create that, but I do think some kind of benchmarks to evaluate it and help us evaluate it, should it come due for renewal of...
And those benchmarks would only be part of it. There's be some subjective...you know, we get to vote, so we get to, you know, have input from other things, but I'm going back to my question, I didn't hear, when, Dr. Bowden, you think we can get that? We all agree it's late.
Well, I would think February, March, so I'll promise April.
April 1st?
No, if we're talking about the design, which is us sharing with you what we think are the objectives of this tool and the outcomes, I think that could happen sooner, maybe after the break.
So, January?
So, no later than April.
All right, so we'll look at the design...
It's an evaluation plan, what they call an evaluation plan. Because we may, we...
I look forward to seeing it at the April meeting. Thank you.
Well, no, I...what they're trying to say is, what they don't want to do is come at the April meeting with numbers for us, and then, oh, that's not what I wanted. They want us to look at the plan and saying, is this what you want us to do? And so, when those numbers come back in April, that you're satisfied, that you don't come in April and say, well, that's not what I wanted, I really wanted that.
May I interject really quickly? But I think this framework, again, going back to, it's not, not to pick on you, but I agree with you. I think that this is something we should be doing no matter what. And so, it is to that point of, you may already have a lot of information already, and just putting it in some kind of outline, and then providing it with us, and then having a deadline of April for some...
Sure, and we use the term report card, but what I'm hearing loud and clear this morning is Eric doesn't want to do an evaluation of iReady. He's asking that we, as staff, do an evaluation of iReady and issue kind of a report card on where are we in kind of adoption and correlation and prediction, and just three, four, five items, and saying, how are we doing on those items?
Yeah, and I think, from this point, if you could give us a heads-up about those items before the April meeting, that'll make the April meeting go even smoother.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Before it...
Shirley always comes up with great ideas, and I'm always...
The Brown man?
The Brown man.
The Brown man.
Okay, so then we'll go to the dashboard then, yes?
Yes, and as we're transitioning to the dashboard, I have to say one thing, and not related to this, I like your FSU tie, Mr. Robinson. I just want to go on, like to say that...
Long, long day.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm going to walk us through the dashboard, and it's a little small, but it'll be published after this meeting. We'll bring it over to Mina, and he'll put it on the website, so you'll have an opportunity to play with it. Or you could walk up to the podium and look at it. Or any monitor. Okay, so this dashboard, we're calling the Academic Progress Monitoring Dashboard, and it was designed, as the others, to sort of answer the question, how are we doing during the year? And we're focusing on reading and mathematics. The first dashboard, the first part of this dashboard that you're looking at is for reading performance on iReady and for Achieve 3000. Across the top, you'll see the typical filters. This goes back two years, and before I even go further, I want to thank James Farrar standing up there, who had a lot to do with this design, Alex Pynchon, who had a conflict, couldn't be there, IT team, their fathers, James Farrar and Mr. Pynchon. So, thank them all for their help with us and a lot of really hard work. Anyway, so if we go back to years, this goes back two years, 1617 and 1718. You're looking at 1617 so that you could see the data from three assessment periods on iReady. All the schools have data on this chart. There's a school dropdown filter. You have the demographics filter. It can be sliced by gender, ethnicity, ESE, and ELL. Three bullet points I want to make about, or three points on iReady, so that we're all in the same place when we look at this. With iReady data, you must choose a grade level. So, up on the top there, where James is circling, is where you would choose that grade level to look at the data, because the scales are different at each grade level. How you can see what those scales are is in the first top-left corner icon, you can see something that's called iReady Average Scale Scores. It's a little link on the bottom, right there. So, if you clicked on that, you would get the Scale Score Placement Tables. So, you don't have to go anywhere, they're right there for you. iReady is also an adaptive test. It is 21st century testing. I predict all testing will go this way eventually, but it is, if a student performs well, they're given harder problems or harder passages. If they perform less well, they are taken down a level. So, it is adaptive to where the student is learning, because as Dr. Roca said, this is really an instructional tool. Third thing I want to bring to your attention is, certain subtests are only given at certain grade levels. So, if all of a sudden you're at a grade level...this gone still? If you're on a grade level and you see a subtest disappear, it's because it's not offered at that subtest. Again, iReady is only available through grades K8. So, if you pick grade nine, iReady's going to disappear from these charts, and you will just have Achieve 3000 showing. So, it's not that it's broken, and I know we'll get those questions when it's put out to the public. The upper-left corner, we have Reading iReady Average Scale Scores for three assessment periods. The blue is Assessment Period 1, black Assessment Period 2, green Assessment Period 3. Again, this is from last year. AP1 is usually the fall. We'll be starting AP2 this year, December 4th, and then we have one administration in the spring. Going down to the lower-left corner, we have iReady Relative Placement to Grade Chart. This is overall score, and also broken down by the subcategories in iReady. It will tell you the percent of students that are on level, that are below one level, that are above one level, or above two levels. If you hover on any of the bars, it will tell you how many students are in those. If we're not sure about whether a subtest is given at a certain level, you can click on that icon down there, and it will show you what subtests are at each grade. Now, if we go to the upper-right corner, this is where we have the predictive value versus the actual proficiency for this 2017 FSA. This data was provided by Curriculum Associates. This is a static chart.
Shirley, that actual proficiency, is that how they scored on the FSA?
Actually did. The fourth bar there, we decided to put it there so you could see how close the predictions really were.
And how are the predictive scores going for 1718?
I could show you that. We have one up there, and if you want to choose 1718, this is where our bars are right now. Well, we have predictive for AP1. This was provided by Curriculum Associates.
But they don't have the test, so...
No, because we don't have the test yet.
Actually, the closer the test...
The closer to the test, the prediction, of course, will become stronger and higher. Okay, you want to go to the upper...
That makes you happy. Can you repeat that comment, because I don't want it to get lost? That as you go through the assessment periods, its predictive ability...
Will become stronger.
Because you're getting closer to the...
Getting closer to the exam.
I thought you wanted Eric to repeat that comment.
He's happy?
Eric, would you repeat that? No, Eric said he's happy and we've now cut his mic off. That's where we want Eric to be for today. He's happy.
No, the part about the predictive score so far this year, that it goes to how we're doing, and I think from reading that, how we're doing is good. It's strong. I like that. That makes me happy.
That makes me happy.
We're happy that you're happy.
I'll be almost done in a second and we can break. Okay, so you see for grade three at assessment period, you can see that we were, I think it was assessment period two, we were at 67% and in the end, we were 71%. Okay, this chart, because it's static, it's not affected by the filters. Okay, so this will just remain. You're not going to search by specific or slice and dice by certain subcategories.
And that's because it's provided, you said, by a curriculum associate.
Correct. And I couldn't, I tried to, but I couldn't get it further.
Got it.
The bottom right corner, just to give some detail here, this chart is for high school only. So, if you choose grade nine and 10, this is the chart that's going to come up. Now, this is, you have to be very careful when looking at this. We are trying to track with this chart our non-proficient students on Achieve 3000. So, you'll see that these Lexile scores are low. When you click on the bottom right corner there, it'll give the average Lexile by grade level. So, you're going to see right away they're low, because we're trying to track those kids that are low. They're level one and two on the FSA last year, or they're ESE kids that are in access courses. But it's very important that we monitor them. So, that's why this is here. And all of this, if we go to math now, I just have one more that I want to go over. We have the three I Ready mathematics charts, broken down by category, operate the same way as reading. But on the bottom right, you have mathematics for algebra, geometry and Algebra II. These are our benchmark assessments they are given twice a year. A comment on benchmark assessments. They are dipsticks. They are saying at a certain period of time, this is how our students are doing on the standards. Many times, teachers haven't taught these standards yet. So, why is that valuable? Because they can see that there are some standards that maybe students are doing very well on. And this data is sliced and diced in the IIS right down to the standard level. They can see who's not performing well on it, which actual students are performing well and which are performing well. So, these are our two. The mid-year one, which will begin next week as well, is usually used as a midterm exam. I'm not looking at this point to say that these are predictive exams at all for the FSA or these EOCs, but they are there so we can track progress. If you click on one of the bars, right-click it, you can see that you have a drill-down feature and you could break it down by grade level. So, you can see how students that are enrolled in those courses at specific grade levels are doing. Obviously, if you're in ninth or seventh grade in algebra, you're a high-performing kid, you're probably doing better there. As we go along, if you're a 12th grader in one of those lower courses, you're probably not doing as well. Last, if you go to the first table, first set of charts, you'll see as, if you don't remember anything I've said or you need more further information, we provide documentation on every dashboard and who's included and who isn't and other further little details. But if you still have questions, just call us.
And before we just complete, I just want to remind you that we were able to hire James thanks to a grant from the Patterson Foundation in our attempt to make data transparent. They were very generous with us in allowing us to have James, someone with some skill in creating dashboards, so that this data is transparent for our whole community.
That is a very important component. As I was looking through this, I'm thinking bandwidth, I'm also thinking how the sustainability of it, because I know the backend build is a substantial investment, but also making sure we maintain it. And I'm not an IT person, so where the data aggregates for polls from, because we own this, is proprietary to Sarasota County, is that correct? So, because I've even had people come to me from outside the district, talking about all these supplemental resources that they can provide. And I think, given that, yes, it was a grant, but we still take it as considered money within the district, you know, the sustainability of being able to see this data aggregate, we have taken that into account. And James, you can't go anywhere, so you have to stay here.
That's great.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, is when you're looking at the I Ready and Achieve data, is that it is predictive on FSA, but you're not yet ready to go there on EOC?
The benchmarks, I have correlated some of the benchmarks to the EOC and they're pretty highly correlated. Would I say they were predictive? We typically do higher, because first of all, the second benchmark's only given in winter, December. Right now, it'll start next week. It's not as predictive. We typically have scored higher on our EOCs than we have on our benchmarks.
Gotcha. So, is it sounding the alarm if they're below but not signaling above?
No, I wouldn't go there. One of the things we are looking at, at the high school level and the middle school level, is to figure out a more ongoing formative assessment type that we can pull data from and do better predictions. And it's just the beginning of our discussions. Our benchmarks were put into play because, especially with EOCs, because we didn't want to get to the end of the year and a child who wasn't doing well said, oh, we had no indication of this, you know, and all of a sudden they fail. So, that was the big impetus for the EOC benchmarks. But I think it's time now that we started looking, and I'm not the only one, lots of us are thinking, that we have to look at formative assessment in multiple core content areas at the middle and high school for the same reason, but also to do some predictions.
It does sound an alarm, though, Todd. It allows the teachers to know what standards a group of children still need work on and who needs to be enriched. And that's what we really want. We want teachers to be able to individualize their instruction.
And these are broken down on the IIS, which is also our tool. We built this IIS. So, the IIS, all of those benchmark data sliced and diced by every standard, every kid, and it's color-coded who's not doing well and who is.
But we've talked about before with IIS in the early indications or indicators, is oftentimes instructional staff doesn't necessarily know how to interpret all of that and having supportive or a bridge to help them. Because we have all this data, but it takes time to analyze it and getting it to those, to the instructional staff to do, because what are we going to do? We have the data, but what are we doing with it? Ultimately, I mean, that's a question we all have. So, what, and so I pose, I know we briefly touched upon it before, but what, how are we, because I know that's a position that we used to have, we do no longer have it, but especially as we start to really focus on the data.
And we try to reach them in a number of ways, trying to interpret. We've gone out to, my staff have gone out to all the schools and try, as much as anybody wants us there, we're there to interpret. We've done it a number of ways. I've gone and presented. We've done PLC meetings where we stay there all day, have the PLCs come in, we're invited in and we go through the data. Is it where I would like it to see it or anyone would like it to see? No. But I think we have to continue to have those brainstorming sessions. District-wide, we, for example, the first couple of months in school, when we had district meetings and we had principal meetings, we brought the data forward and we had them dissect it, you know, and we did, first we put it in hard copy, then they went online and they were interpreting our specifically lowest quartile reports, so that the question is, do you know this child? And that's what we keep emphasizing.
And let me just say, she answered from the district perspective, but at every school, principals are holding data chats with their teachers. You've heard that repeatedly in your school presentations. So, every principal is meeting with their grade level or department teams and looking at data. They're looking at the lowest quartile, they're looking at the supports that are given to each and every child in that lowest quartile who have not been making progress. They're looking at the data on children who we could accelerate and haven't in the past. So, from the district perspective, Denise's team is working on that. We're doing that at district trainings. But at every school, if you multiply that out by knowing that every teacher is responsive with their principal on looking at data, data is truly driving instruction in our schools.
So, they can answer the question, do you know this child? Yes.
That's the question we've been posing, do you know this child?
Are we confident that the answer is yes when that question's asked?
I am.
Okay.
We're drilling down. It's every child, every day.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the work. I know. Looks great. Very exciting. Go and plug through. I think everyone's taking their own breaks as they need to. Okay, so next is Policy 7.7 Review, Scott Lempy and Art Hardy. And we are ahead of schedule, just FYI, so everyone knows that. Hi, how are you?
Good morning. How are you?
And we started late. Okay. Whenever you're ready.
All right. Well, good morning, board members, Superintendent Bowden. What we're here to talk about, as Bridget just said, is School Board Policy 7.71. And we gave you some read ahead to at least start the dialogue. In your read ahead, we included a redline version of some changes that we are recommending to the school board, along with a copy of the current policy, so you could kind of put the two things side by side and see what changed. I guess as you go through that redline, it looks pretty significant. There's a whole lot of strikeouts and there's a whole lot of additions. Most of that is not policy change. The vast majority of it falls into a, well, let me maybe hit on four things. We added some definitional things to the current policy, because as we went through it, in fact, as we were trying to sit down with Todd and walk through kind of what covers what in this policy, there was some confusion in the policy just because of definitions. So, we added some definitional stuff, because the policy really covers four different kinds of contracts, and I'll come back to that in a second. The second thing we noticed is there was a lot of duplication in the current policy. If you go through the current 7.71, it's really Roman numeral A or subparagraph A and subparagraph B, and it talks about two different kinds of contracts. But for the most part, it's the same process, lots of duplication. So, we tried to remove that duplication, say, those things that are the same across all different kinds of contracts, they are the same. And where they differ, you can kind of see where they differ, and we've done that via titles. So, most of what you see is just reorganizing the policy. The two big changes that are out there, number one is we have at least recommended that we go away from a dollar amount that limits where you can go with design build and gone to what we refer to as statutory authority. And that's significant, because your current policy limits design build to projects under $1 million. The law allows us to go to $2 million. So, if we go with the draft you see in front of us, that's a pretty significant change in terms of how we can use design build. The second meaty change is really, I think, what the key part of our conversation is today, and that is about how we assign work. And that's kind of the back of the policy. If you look at subparagraphs R and S, the back of the policy, what does assignment look like? The current 7.71, for the most part, is silent on assignment. We have a process been in place for a very long time. I could walk you through that process if you cared. But I know there's been some concern about what's the authority to do what you're doing? And so, we've tried to address that in policy by saying, here's what assignment looks like. Probably equally important is what we didn't touch or make any recommendations to change. We didn't change the makeup of the committee at all. We didn't change the way we score at all. We didn't change any of the documents we use to document any of those kinds of things, the scoring sheets, none of that changed. And it's important, because if you go back over the history of the policy, every, how often do we do ad hoc? Five years? Every five years? The current policy, Al, asks us to review the policy with an ad hoc committee at least every five years. We just did that last year. So, the current policy was reviewed by a committee chaired by the Executive Director of the Gulf Coast Builders Exchange. That's important, because I think if you ask the people who use this policy, they'll tell you it is not only good, but it's better than the other municipal governments who they do business with. So, there's a lot to say that the current 7.71 is an effective policy, just obviously we need to do some tweaks at the edges. So, that's kind of a lead-in comment then to solicit some feedback from you about what have you read?
Before you do that, we all know who's sitting to your left and right, but for those in the audience and watching on TV, if you could introduce your co-presenters, please.
Absolutely. I apologize for not doing that. To my far-left, Mr. Jody Dumas. Jody is Executive Director of Facilities and Construction. Mr. Mark Smith, to my immediate left, is the Director of Construction Services. And Mr. Art Hardy is School Board's Counsel. And Art and his office played a big role in, and remember why we're doing this really is twofold. Number one is to make sure that our policy complies with law. Number two, to make sure that it's reflective of the process that we use today. And so, Art and Martin Garcia, I guess, were kind of the lead folks who helped us with the first part of that, and that is to make sure it's compliant with law.
I guess there was some confusion in the current policy about when things had to come for the board for approval. So, under this new policy, I see multiple places that says contract has to come for the school board approval. But I was trying to follow the flow chart, trying to find the situation where it did not come in front of the school board. Did I miss that? Was there, is there a time where you could award a contract for $999,000 and it not go in front of the board?
Yes. I think if you look at subparagraph S toward the back of the contract, right, page 17 of 11.
Notice that.
For major single projects?
Well, S is board approval of contracts. Are you there on 17?
Yeah.
All right. So, all contracts issued for major single projects, design-build single projects, design-build continuing contracts, professional service continuing contracts. So, all of those come to the board and subprojects. And subprojects are defined as those projects that are assigned pursuant to the continuing contracts. So, all of those come to the board unless specifically exempted below. So, what you're asking, the answer to your question, Eric, is in 1, 2 and 3 below, where it says, with respect to subprojects, the school board delegates to the superintendent or his designee the right to enter contracts on behalf of the school board in the following circumstances. And then it has the three. The first one is, and these are all subprojects, remember, involving projects previously approved by the school board in the capital improvement budget that do not exceed $2 million. The second category is renovation or new construction contracts, not specifically listed in the capital improvement budget, that do not exceed $325,000.